Before we go over the agenda and other items that we have tonight, I'm going to make an announcement that we're very sorry and hope that the people in our fire department are being served. One of the Pownell Valley firefighters was killed in a tragic accident this morning. Brief counselors are at the Pownell Valley Firehouse this evening to help everyone deal with this loss in our community and fire department. And I would like to take a moment of silence in this and then we'll have our meeting. Thanks. Okay. For the agenda approval, approval of the minutes of 118-18, warrants, mail, administrative assistant report. Under new business, we have Megan Randall here. Talk about a grant application from Vermont Community Foundation. Approve undesignated general surplus funds tonight and general expenses for fiscal year 19. Approve fiscal year 19 general budget. Approve undesignated road surplus funds towards fiscal year 19 road expenses. Approve fiscal year 19 road budget. And 28 town, yeah, 2018 town warning. Under old business, we have the town office mold assessment and town administrator progress report. Got a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there anything to be added?
No. We don't need to approve the road budget because we already did it.
Okay.
Unless you want to do it again.
No, we did it.
You did it.
Okay. I've since done it twice.
Going to take that look.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Okay, approve of the minutes of 118-18.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion on it? All those in favor say aye.
I understand, I wasn't here.
Okay, aye. So we have the vote we need. Okay. Invoices for accounts payable ending 2/2/18 in the amount of $23,124.20, of which $15,000 of this was our payment for our equipment at the road. It's back home.
Final payment too.
Final payment?
Final payment.
That's even better. Okay. Things here at that one. Yeah. Payroll ending 2/2/2018 in the amount of $7,000, $7.20. Okay. We're done.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions or nays? Let's go carry. Okay, let's get those things. Okay, we have some liquor license renewals. One is for Dwyer's Beer Wine. What's your pleasure?
I'm just starting it. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, everybody has to sign this. I'll pass it down. Linda will have it down there. Have a liquor license renewal application for Stewart's Shop. What's your pleasure?
Motion to sign it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Everybody has to sign this. Pass it down and Linda will have it. Okay. Yes, the Vermont HCC Transportation Department and Motor Vehicles Uniform Municipal Excess Weight Permit, and there's several of them. I'll take and read them off and you guys can make your motion. Nathan Shitten? Yeah, Shitten. He, Joe has signed off on this and put on his normal things. What's your pleasure?
Make a motion and accept it.
Can we read them all up and do it in?
Yeah, do them all once.
Okay. That's what I was going to do and then I changed my mind.
Make the minutes really long until one pipeline.
All right, the other one, the next one, Irish Trucking is this one, and it's, again, Joe has gone through it and signed it, and all the various restrictions we put on around it.
Do we know him?
He's out of business, he was big off.
This one is John Tractor and Excavation Service. Of the same thing, Joe has signed off on it and the various items have been put on. The next one is RK Miles. If you all know, Joe has done the same thing here. Actually, he hasn't. He's signed off on this, but he did not put the restrictions on this one for the mud season and stuff like the other ones had on it.
Okay, you want to pull that one, well, make a notation on that. We can take care of that in the morning. Some folks didn't take the form that we have online and used another one. Which one is that one again?
RK Miles.
They just deliver building materials.
When I ask for the warning, I'll ask, or the approval, I'll ask for a motion with the stipulation that the people that don't have, fills it out.
That was one that used another form that wasn't ours.
Okay. Maximilian Incorporated. Again, this one has all the data on it and signed off. Newport Sand and Gravel Company, Feral Concrete Corp. This one has all the items and Joe has signed off. L&amp;W Whitney, L. Whitney Trucking, the same. Joe signed off, all the information is there. This one is Jim Galusha Contracting. And this one is all filled out and signed. Correct that he's signed as approved, but I'll fix that when we get there. Everything's okay otherwise. This is Joseph F. S.I.N.O.P.O.L.I.
Sinopoli.
Sinopoli?
Sinopoli.
Sinopoli. Okay. And everything's on this except Joe hasn't signed it.
That's the last one that came in tonight. It was just, I just took it off the backs for the certificate we were waiting for.
Okay, but everything's on it, so all it would be with that?
Yeah. He came in at the end of the day looking for it, but after he left, the certificate arrived.
Okay, I would get a motion to approve all except for RK Miles and Joseph F. Sinopoli. Then we'll make a motion to get these corrected. So we take a motion to approve all the others.
I make a motion we approve them all that are correct.
Except RK Miles and Sinopoli at this time.
Yep.
They'll be approved after they're signed off.
Second. I'll give you a second.
Okay, all those, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Okay. And we'll get these signed off and you'll bring these back, Linda?
Yes.
We have a service agreement from the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, and probably the best person to talk about this will be you, Sue. Unless this is the one we told you to go to work on?
Yeah, this is the one you approved for me to talk to Abby Friedman from Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, and they're going to help us do the advertising for the town administrator position. They'll help us with the applications and the warning. And I have, and I have more information on that later on unless you want me to do it all now.
No, this is fine as long as, this is what?
We approved it, but they wanted a signature. They wanted a sign.
Yeah, but we, in this, we put a limit to what, $2,000?
My note said from two to four, but I think it was, I think we said two.
Do you remember what it was? No? Well, I would accept a motion as long as they don't exceed what we approved previously for funds for this.
Well, it says in there from $2,500 for advertising up to $500 for the lawyer. It would probably be the legal assistant at $44 an hour, but she said it wouldn't be more than that too. They have to have a range, but not to exceed.
What's your pleasure, guys? Need a motion to accept and sign this contract. Can we talk more about it or we can vote? No motion?
Make a motion to approve it.
Got to get a second.
We got a limit on it, right?
Yep.
That's what I think we need to do in a motion.
Yep.
So.
As long as there's a limit on it, I'll second it.
Okay.
Me too.
And we got that, and we got that somewhere in the minutes.
It's, the limit's around there.
The limit's around here.
They're on the contract right there.
Okay. Yeah, you got, yeah, I see. Expense total cost does not exceed 500 for staff time and 2,500 for cost of advertising.
Right. Don't want to, we're going to try to do a lot of websites, a lot of free advertising. The, we can even get it into the Vermont News Guide in March, which won't cost us anything. So there's other avenues that won't cost us anything. I think the Burlington Free Press is probably the biggest one that costs the most for advertising.
Okay, so the amounts on here?
Yeah, the larger amounts are for advertising, not for the, to write a small ad.
On that advertisement, is it mandatory that they have Vermont license?
That's up, that's up to us if that's what.
Because it's, isn't there any agreement there?
That they have a Vermont what?
Driver's license?
In that agreement?
Oh, no, this, not in this agreement. What you're looking for is, you're talking about the advertisement itself.
Right.
We haven't written it yet.
Oh, I, all right.
They're helping us with that.
Okay.
They're helping us.
But we get to say that.
I had a horse before the wagon, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
We can require that.
We had talked about that, Bruce, when we talked about the job description. And remember, we're looking at Vernon, Vermont, and it said should have a Vermont State Band with driver's license, and we did talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. Got to call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Abstentions or nays? Ayes. We have a letter from Kami Sew to do with the open lister's position. As we know, please be advised that I have taken papers out to run for the one-year lister's position in March 2018. I am aware that at this time we do not have a lister for Pownell. Would like to express my interest in becoming an interim lister between now and March. I do currently have a full-time job and could only work part-time, nights and weekends in this position. Please let me know if this would be acceptable to you. Thank you for your consideration. I asked her what nights was, and she gets out sometimes around three to five o'clock so she could come here in the, in that time period, as well as schedule people if they wished to come in on the weekends, she'd come in and work with them. So that's up to you whether you want to accept her as our part-time while we're waiting for the election or not.
Does she know how to do the listing position? I wouldn't know how to be a lister, so I'm asking, does she know?
I know she's talked about taking some courses on it. I don't know if she's taken any yet, but we probably should make her aware that if she does take them, if she's working for us, that we pay for them. And the other thing is, is that I'm sure, just like our clerk did in the past, we can have her call listers elsewhere. She needs to set that up and get support and help. Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns is probably the first place I'd look, and then they would tell names of people that might provide that.
She would be working with the Department of Taxes, not the League.
Okay, Department of Taxes will provide her with the help that she needs. That works fine, just so she has somebody to contact. What's your pleasure, guys? Want to move to a point until March 2018 when the election occurs?
We need somebody somewhere. I don't have a problem with it.
Is that a motion to?
Yeah, it's a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstentions or nays? You will let her know, Linda?
Yes.
And we can work with her and find out what the hours mean and the rest of the stuff. Okay. We have a sheet from, this is from Vermont Department of Environmental Conservation and Natural Resources. This is to talk about the town of Pownell Construction and Recreation Trail. Total length is approximately one mile. And basically what this is doing, this is not a permit, but it's informing the group that they need to go through the Act 250 permit requirement. They don't need the wastewater, and they need to look through the zoning for anything that might apply here in the Department of Public Works. If they're doing wastewater, but we're not, I don't think they're doing wastewater now, I don't know. But that's what it is. I'm going to pass that on to that rec committee, a copy of it, and then keep it.
It's already being handled by the BRC.
Okay, yeah, they're working with it.
It's part of this grant application.
Okay. Because I know he's working with them.
Right. It's a project review sheet, and he's working on the application.
Okay.
Need that out to come first.
So he, he knows that. Okay, Walt Klinger, our BRC representative, is talking about the regular meeting of the BRC that they had where a person of the Vermont Department Fish and Wildlife focused on changes to Act 171, that where we require towns to include forests and critical nature habitat, natural habitats in their town plans, and to manage development such areas sustainable We have, as you know, we have large blocks of forest. He goes on to talk about an Act 171 compliance will become an important issue for the Select Board and Town Development Review Board to consider. I know there, through the town plan, there are areas that are zoned for animal habitats and water and other things, so. Do you see that the planning board gets a copy of this? Because it certainly falls into the town plan part of it. Okay, Local Government Day in the Legislature Thursday, February 15th is coming up. I'd register to go to this. Anyone else that wishes to, please let Linda know. We usually send a representative or two each here.
It's a Thursday night, isn't it?
Yeah, it's Thursday day and night, so if you do that, Thursday, February 15th, we wouldn't have a meeting, or we could have a meeting, it's just I won't be here. It's up to you guys. Okay. Vermont Council on Rural Development has sent down a request, if I read this correctly, to have assistance from the town, become a membership base.
Add to this membership info.
So if you want to become a member of the Vermont Council on Rural Development, they're the ones that did Dean Power Pownell, Palander Volunteer Combat, side dumping, Pownell Business Network, and Power Pownell, and numerous other things through the years. What they're looking for, it says 150 for towns or organizations, they're looking for $150. There's strength in numbers, and we want you as a partner. So they're looking for members to, to the process. It helps.
Have we been a member in the past?
I don't think they started it, didn't they? Were they, they used to be supported through the legislature. I think they still are. Local, nonprofit, private, invited guests. Yeah, I don't see anything at list. Usually, sometimes you'll see something, but it'll send you down a long list, but I don't see anything that shows a list of any members. Says it's a membership base, provides operational support needed to continue proper critical support to Vermont communities. It's your pleasure, guys. Want to be a member of the Vermont Council on Rural Development? What do you want to think on it?
I make a motion, we go, it ain't going to hurt.
$150. Got a motion to accept? Get a second?
Okay, I'll second it.
Want to talk about it?
Yeah, I thought they were, they did a phenomenal job at Power Pownell. They were really, really well organized and really good leadership in that group. I like what they do.
It's $150 a year?
I'm set.
Yeah.
$150 for towns who are, there's a strength in numbers, we want you as a partner. And so I got a motion for the $150 a year joining.
Second.
And you got a second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? Abstentions? Everybody said aye. Okay. We also have a quote from Catamount Environmental to do with the removal of our asbestos containing cement boards from the ceiling of the safe in the town office building. So everybody had a chance to see this. I know we went and asked someone to go out and get this and get this because we want to have it taken care of. What's your discussion on this, guys? Anything?
Do we have to put this out for bid or can we just give it to them?
The amount that it is, you don't?
They have to do it. That company has to do it.
Okay.
Yeah, and what they quoted here, it's a work to find. It's below $10,000 anyways. It's, it's, basically, I'll say what, say what it, if we're not going to go to bid, I'll say what the price is. The price that they're offering to do this for is $2,925.
And that's to remove the asbestos in the safe?
Yes. Properly remove all asbestos waste from the job site, provide disposal, asbestos abatement work in accordance with EPA, OSHA, State of Vermont Regulation, government asbestos removal. Scope of the work, so.
I'm proud to approve it. Needs to be done.
Let's get it done. Has to be done.
I got a motion to go with it? Got a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let's get it done. Do I need to sign this or you'll get something else you want me to?
No, you need to sign it.
Now, are we going to need to get some help to get all them books and stuff out?
No.
They're going to do that?
They're going to take care of that.
Okay.
If they got asbestos on it?
They're going to, they're going to take care of it.
All right.
They don't want any of us in there.
Be done on nights and weekends.
They're going to, they're going to put up.
Plastic and everything.
And we just have to take out what's on the floor, just so they can get in and do something and, and stay out of the way.
Did they say when they can do it or it'll have to be scheduled?
It hasn't been scheduled. They had to get it approved first, but they have to do it on when there is no one in the office.
That's right. Close the place down for a weekend or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Administrative Assistant Reporter.
Chuck Watson is moving forward with the telephone system. He was at the office this week and he'll return next week. The new copy is scheduled to be delivered and set up Friday the ninth, and Chuck will be here for that and help get, coordinate the computers, the printers, so, you know, that's so that we can scan and all that stuff. I'm sure that's going to take up most of the day. Worked with the attorney to get a contract drawn up for your gravel purchase. Please review it. A change was made to the draft that was emailed to the board earlier. See number five, method to account for the extract, extracted aggregate materials from the parcel. Look to where it says survey of the gravel in place. They're going to just do it with the gravel in place. That's what Joel had talked to us before about, to account for the total number of yards. Other than that, I believe it's what the board was looking for, and read it over. If there's any other revisions you'd like to see, let us know. The attorney will be here next week. Joel's scheduled to be in. And advise when you would like to have the other party review it so that we can baby execute it next week.
I read it today. I have no problem with the other party looking at it now. I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
I think they ought to turn it over to the other party and have them look it over and we'll be ready.
Yeah, we'll be ready when the attorney comes. We can say if there's conflict, there's a conflict versus calling them back.
And then we would also know too if the other party has, has something that they would like to see different too. Okay? So that's okay?
Yeah, makes sense.
All right.
First, I've come a lawyer here twice.
Yeah. Worked on the final budget and town warning with the, with our auditor, Dave Adams. Surpro of Bennington provided a report on the crawl space. The mold assessment is on the agenda for later, we'll be talking about it. Surpro is currently doing a job across the street, so that's how I was able to estimate if they could come and look at our building and give us their thoughts on, on what was going on with the mold in the, in crawl space. Several excess weight permits were processed this week, and the alarms unlimited. We're, we're back in the office for measurements, and they told me they will return next week to pick up where they left off. Took a bunch of measurements and getting the materials, etc., so that's moving forward. And that's my report.
Do you know if Joe got to hold a tan to do with the building?
Can't do that yet. Got to wait till that squared away with the EPA in the state.
Okay. Any other questions?
So basically, we're going to let, let the other party from, just for recapping from what I just read here, the only instruction from the board is to let the other party review the contract.
Yes.
Glad to hear that Chuck Watson's moving forward with your phones you've been waiting for a long time.
Moving on to new business. Megan Randall.
Megan Randall. Hi, my name is Megan Randall, and I'm here representing Pownell Proud, which is a greenup and cleanup, volunteer greenup and cleanup committee dedicated to reducing roadside litter and illegal dumping in Pownell. So we've had several successful cleanups, and we want to build on that momentum. We've been doing this since 2015, and in the final, we, we were formalized at Empower Pownell. So in the, the final action plan, they suggested several grants that we should apply for. So I picked one that seemed to fit our purposes. It's the Vermont Community Foundation Spark Connecting Communities Grant. And what I'm asking for, I'm not asking for a lot of money. It would be a small grant to provide signage in key spots, a game or trail camera for over on India Massacre Road, strategic fencing possibly, if we can get that much, and then some other small expenditures for cleanups, like gloves and safety vests and prizes and things like that as they arise. So the application requires either the sponsorship of a 501(c)(3) organization or the town. So I'm here to formally request the sponsorship, I guess you call it fiscal sponsorship, the town. And there's, I believe- And there's, I believe there's an app, like a form that has to be signed off on and I'll mail that to you if you, if you accept it, I wanted to run it by you first.
Is this any cost to the town at this point, other than us just signing the application?
I don't, I haven't seen any costs, no.
Okay.
And how much are you asking for for the grant?
I, I was, I'm, I'm hesitating about that, from five to eight hundred maybe, depending on, you know, fencing would cost a lot more than that maybe, so.
It's going to whatever fence.
Yeah.
And the only cleanup we're doing is Indian Massacre Road, are we doing the others?
No, 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 we've done a lot, we've done, we, we've, we always do Green Up Day. We did one on North Palma Road, we did one on Skippery, we did one, and we've done two in Indian Massacre. And then the people in the committee do their own areas, so I did Skippery, Dave Low does by him. Lad Road, I think it is. And we also have a, a listing of people who have kind of signed up to, to adopt a road in their road, where they walk or wherever. So we've got Burrington Road, Carpenter Hill, and we're looking, we're always looking for people to, to sign that, you know, kind of commit to, to keeping an eye out. And the reason we're doing it is so that people will feel that it isn't futile, you know, that to, to clean up, that there are other people are doing it and it's worthwhile.
Right.
And we'll get somewhere with it.
I know you guys have worked hard with it.
Yeah.
I make a motion that should go ahead with it?
We signed the grant application, is that what the motion is?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The grant is from, from where again?
Of Vermont Community Foundation, it's called a Spark Connecting Communities Grant. There are also several other, if you want me to tell you the other ones.
No, that's okay.
So I...
I just know there's several grants and then there's follow-up work to do afterwards after you get it.
Sure, sure.
I got a motion, you get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this? So when this grant comes in, you'll be administering it, the town's responsible, but you'll keep our administrative assistant informed, so if she has to file anything?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, with that said, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So when you get it, bring it to me.
Okay.
Okay, now we're...
Thank you, thanks for coming in.
Okay, we have to approve undesigned funds.
Yep, we're looking for this page, these are your motions that I need.
I need a, a motion for the we designated general surplus funds, somebody read it off and make a motion to approve.
You want me to read it? One, undesigned general surplus funds, motion to apply prior year undesigned general surplus funds in the amount of 130, 136.21 toward the FY 18, 19 general expenses. Motion to approve.
Got a motion for that one, you get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, you approved the general surplus, now you need the next one.
Undesignated road surplus funds, motion to apply prior year undesigned road surplus funds in the amount of sixteen thousand three hundred ninety-one point four-three toward the fiscal year seventeen, eighteen road expenses. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Approved fiscal year nineteen general budget, this is the one we're working on.
What should we have on that, Linda, though?
This is the one you have...
It's just your final printout from our last workshop?
Our last workshop.
If you looked at the, one of my emails I sent earlier today, you'll notice on, I think it was page two, that we did a little editing and I think it looks cleaner.
Yeah, and you added the town administrative that we asked.
Right, on your salary figures.
Yes, and got the select and more expenditures up in a separate block. Bottom line did not change.
And Ellen was okay with the way it went?
It's just was cleaned up. The ballot article was added for the new, for the repeater system, twenty thousand and the additional nonprofit, in the amount of five hundred. So the bottom line is one point two million, one hundred, one million two hundred forty-one thousand and thirty-five dollars, including the ballot articles.
And yeah, that's what I said, that's what it is. Okay, you get a motion to accept the approval of the general...
Motion to approve is read.
General budget, okay. Get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Okay, now we're down to the town warning.
Before you do the town warning, may I speak, please? Okay. I have a couple of things. One, I would like you to clarify the reasoning of you appointing the town clerk versus the past of being elected by the residents of the town.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not for sure what article ballot is yet, I haven't seen the warning or anything, but I will, I'm sure tomorrow. Second, I have issues with, after your meeting last Thursday, I had five residents come into the town of Palma and accuse me and ask me how that I can still work for the town of Palma if I'm embezzling. Okay.
Well, let's clear that.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I'm here and I'm trying to stay calm, cool and collective and be nice, very nice. However, I would like, like I said, wire to clarify the ballot. Two, I have never embezzled or misappropriated any funds or anything in the town of Palma. I think I have, I work really, really hard in the community everywhere. I have done everything I have been asked to, plus some. So I would like, before you okay this, to just clarify the purpose of the ballot, because I have to tell you...
Before I do that, there's one thing I want to say. I want to thank you for helping us out through a very hard time. You still, you came in, you cleaned some things up, that was a real mess, and you worked very hard at that and you've done, you're dedicated to what you're doing and I'll tell you, we haven't had anywhere near the problems with you that we've had in past clerks. And now for the reason why I think the town should appoint is simply because every time we went to the clerk when there was a problem before, we were always told they were elected official and we had no authority over them. And the only reason that I feel that we should do it the other way is simply so that when we sit down with the clerk, they know that they're working for the town with us and we'll, if there is a problem, we will settle it and solve it and move forward without all the rigmarole that we went through the last few times, I bet on it. And that's the only reason why I agree with the article that's being run and it's why other towns are doing the same thing, because they've had trouble with their clerks too. It's the only reason why the legislature passed them. But again, thank you.
Okay, can I say something?
Sure.
I also want to thank you. I also want to say, if I misled anybody last week, but our meeting was on tape and I said in the past, we've had problems.
I...
Never said we had problems with you.
I didn't watch it.
And if it was, if somebody took that the wrong way, I apologize for that because no way did we mean you, Julie. We have not had any problem and as Nelson said, you've done a lot of good work for us.
That's why I'm, well, I have to tell you, on Friday, I was angry.
I don't blame you, I would be too.
And like I said, I mean, I have no problem coming to show you what I have, what I've been doing, I've been up front with everything. I do have a few more minor things, but I'm not, I will say...
We did have some townspeople come into that meeting and they asked a lot of questions and we tried to answer them to the best of our ability.
Even when I'm at my other jobs and to have people come in and ask me, now, I bartended fifteen years, I have never taken anything for a dime. I might be off a couple dollars, give or take, but I have never, ever taken anything and I, I work hard. To me, I know that yes, I feel a little rough and so it's taken me a lot of restraint to come here, to be accused of that.
People should be aware that you have been continually taking courses and working with other clerks to learn that job.
Yes, I have.
You know, it isn't that you've just been sitting there shuffling papers, you've actually worked hard to learn it.
And we know you've been working hard to learn it.
And if you didn't, this town would have been in deep trouble. And again, that's why we're very, we're very glad to have you.
Well, we still have issues, but I will come at another time or I'll give you a report, but I just wanted to come in to clarify that I am not the one that has done, and I know that you, everybody, what you hear is you hear, but especially now with election because...
Right, too many rumors go around.
Like I said, so it's taken me...
When I was the liquid tax collector, they did the same thing to me when I'm Julie and I know how hard that was.
But, but I hope you understand why we're running the article. It's not because of Julie, it's, it's, it's because we really are looking for a better way to communicate with the clerks.
And Sandy suggested to us that we do this so that the fees go to the town and that we hire.
Well, I'm like, I'm okay with that stuff, but...
And that's why we put it on the ballot, because in order for us to do it that way, we have to have a vote of the town.
Well, like I said, as long as it's the people...
I'd like to say a few words on that myself. Town clerk associates with everybody in the town, plus lawyers, plus people out of town, all the landowners, they all have had a hand in meeting the town clerk one time or another. And I think she's done a real credible job, that's the first thing. And that's the reason why I'm against the SLIC board appointing a town clerk. I think a town clerk should run for office. I believe in, that the town should take the fees, that's fine, and establish a salary, negotiate with the town clerk, whatever the money should be paid, and it should be a decent pay so that you get a decent person. Get a decent pay and some benefits and everything else. We take the fees and the town clerk doesn't have to bother with that, she just has to get a deposit. That's my opinion on that whole ballot, as far as shutting out, because to me, sometimes the board gets a little lopsided one way or the other and it starts to get all one direction. Or if you got the people, we used to elect road commissioners, when the roads started to get real bad, they went the other direction, they got replaced. And I'm sure if the, with the town clerk, if the town clerk, the people's things weren't handled correctly, stuff like that, they would vote her out. They'd run somebody against her, that's how things work. I've had a lot of people through, through the past few years telling me they get bills from the state, they got cancelled checks, they should have never got a bill. So that's why I don't, I don't, I'm not all in favor of the, of the five people on the SLIC board, because sometimes that gets a little lopsided, a little family oriented or whatever you want to call it. I think that the citizens of the town are knowledgeable enough to put in a person, it's a three-year term and the most they can get hurt for is a year or two, as far as being, maybe they don't, and that, and a person is gonna try to, a town clerk is gonna try to please everybody if they're elected. They're appointed, they only gotta please three people. I believe that, I honestly believe that. I mean, and people can think what they want, but I'm an old school guy. If I come in and I'm treated halfway decent by a person, I believe that person, and I believe what a person says until I, they prove me wrong. That's my speech, that's, that's the way I feel on the article.
I come and said what I needed to and I'm okay with that, just so that you know that where I am.
I'm glad you came.
Thank you for coming in.
I hadn't heard that and if they had, I would have certainly...
I hadn't heard it either.
I did Friday and Saturday and Sunday and like I said, it's taken me a week to calm down and...
You've conducted yourself very well.
With a lot of restraint.
With the pressure.
Okay, I'm going back to work. Thank you.
Okay, with that said, we'll get back to...
My mom used to say, if they're talking about you, they'll leave somebody else alone, Julie.
You know, I have any wish, sometimes they talk about me, I think it still bother other people unfortunately.
And we've all had people talk about all of us, I don't think any of us here are lacking that.
Town of Palma warning, 2018. The inhabitants of the town of Palma qualified to vote in the town meeting are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Palma Elementary School and said town on Monday, March 5th, 2018 at 7:30 PM, o'clock in the afternoon. And on Tuesday, March 6th, 2018, for Australian ballot voting at the Palma Center Firehouse to vote for the following issues and candidates. Moderator for one year, town clerk for three years, treasurer for three years, selectman for three years, selectman one year, selectman for one year, lister one year, lister two years, listers for three years, auditor for three years, constable for two years, town agent for one year, grand juror for one year, grand juror for one year, trustees of public money for two years, trustees of public monies for two years. The floor meeting on March 5th, 2018 will open at the Palma Elementary School at 7:30 PM for articles one through two, and then stand adjourned until 7:00 AM at the Palma Center Firehouse for Australian ballot voting on Article 3 through 28. Polls will be opened from 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM at the Palma Center Firehouse. Absentee ballots are available. If you'll be out of town on town meeting day or are ill or disabled, apply at the town clerk's office by Monday, March 5th, 2018. You or a family member may apply in person, by phone or in writing for absentee ballots.
Can I interject something? I just want to remind everybody that some of these positions have nobody running for them, but you can always write in somebody, you can always write in somebody for the position. We really need an auditor and what do they need, 25 votes for a write-in?
Thirty now, right?
How many votes?
I think it's thirty now.
Need thirty votes for a write-in?
Okay. Articles to be voted on, March 5th, 2018. Article one, to hear reports that town officials take action thereon. Article two, to see if the voters will authorize this treasurer to receive taxes until they become delinquent. And then there's a list of ballot articles to be voted on. Article three, election of all officers required by law. Article four, shall the voters appropriate nine hundred eighty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars for the general expense of the town, of which six hundred and twenty thousand eight dollars and seventy-nine cents is to be raised by taxes and one hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents from prior year undesigned surplus funds. Note the fifteen thousand police equipment fund monies to be returned to the taxpayers as voted by the ballot article last year are included in the one hundred and thirty thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty-one cents of the undesigned general surplus funds. Article five, shall the voters appropriate nine hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred dollars for the maintenance and construction of highways in the town, of which eight hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fifty-seven cents shall be raised by taxes and sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents from prior year undesigned surplus funds. Note at the end of fiscal year 2016, 2017, in June, there was sixteen thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents in undesigned road funds. The select board has voted to use eight thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars and forty-three cents of that amount to reduce taxes, see Article five. In Article 26, the select board has requested the other eight thousand... In article twenty-six, the select board has requested the other eight thousand be used to fund the road capital project fund. If article twenty-six passes, the eight thousand will be used to fund the road capital project fund. If article twenty-six fails, the eight thousand dollars will return to the undesigned funds. And, uh, and I'm not going to read every one of these here, just what they are. The next one's for the Bennington area business nurse association ballot article. The next article is for the Bennington County Conservation District. Article eight is for the Bennington County Association Against Child Abuse. Article nine is for the Bennington Free Clinic. Article ten is the Benning for Project Independence. Article eleven is the Brock Community Action in Southwestern Vermont. Article twelve is Green Mountain Retired Senior Volunteer Program and Volunteer Center. Article thirteen is Vermont Greenup. Article fourteen is Oak Hill Children's Center. Article fifteen is Pownell Fire Protected Association. Article sixteen, Pownell Rescue Squad. Article seventeen for the Pownell Valley Fire Department. Article eighteen, Pownell Valley Fire Department. Article nineteen, Pownell Youth Baseball. Article twenty, Project Against Violent Encounters. Article twenty-one, Salon Wright Library. Article twenty-two, Southwestern Vermont Area Council on Aging. Article twenty-three, Sunrise Family Resource Center. Article twenty-four, the Tutorial Center. Article twenty-five, Vermont Center for Independent Living. Article twenty-six, Road Capital Project Fund. Article twenty-seven is for the fire department repeater system. And show the voters authorized, article twenty-eight, show the voters authorized the select board to appoint a town clerk as provided. Okay, with that read, I take a motion to approve the warning.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, Megan.
We're all the way down, just to prove the town warning.
Excuse me for being late.
We, we did a moment of silence for your firefighter.
Okay, under our business, town office mold assessment. Everybody had a chance to read this? Mold remediation message? Comments, concerns, questions?
I got some comments tonight. I went over this mold thing that they, uh, the two tests they gave us. And I found out the front section is all concreted in. There's no way you can make a test there. There's concrete all around the old office. There's no way to get underneath there.
Go down through the bathroom.
Can you get in the big section?
You'll go through the bathroom?
You go down through the bathroom. I think that's concrete, solid concrete.
That one section?
In the first half, in the first half of the front section.
Yeah.
Where the bathroom is and the second half, there's, there's a small cellar there.
Yeah, but there's no way they can get in that section and take the test, right?
They can get in that section and right through the trap door in the bathroom.
In the bathroom.
Down into that one concrete section.
Then they go in the crawl, right? Or is it a crawl space or is it?
I, I think it's concrete right up to the, to the bottom of the building.
Yeah, it is. And that's all concrete. That's supposedly at one time there was.
I haven't been down in that hole, so I've been under here, but not.
No, I mean, if they're just in that very front section where the town clerk sits and that, that little area in the very front.
Yeah, the old office.
They split that building right in half.
Well.
The very front part is pretty much on, right on a slab of concrete. I don't think there's any problem there personally. Because it, it's all above the ground level, the concrete. I read that thing too. And I'm thinking that, but they said that there's a good footing under this building here.
Yeah.
And if we want to do anything to save the building at all, whether we use it or somebody else uses it or anything else, I think that's, we ought to take the recommendation that, that they pretty much gave. Get somebody excavate around it. Take the wooden part of the foundation out of there.
No, it's a wooden, it's a wooden wall.
It's going down through the ground?
With a metal flashing and the dirt's right against it.
And it's just the footing is the only thing that's cement? When I went there, I remember seeing cement. That was it.
You dug that and removed that, come up a little higher with a concrete wall, you'd solve that problem, but.
Then you could either reframe it again or go up closer to the floor with concrete or concrete blocks, something.
Yeah, whatever.
So they could pour a partial wall.
Moisture isn't going to affect.
Yeah, they could pour a partial wall and finish it off with blondie or something.
And you can wash soggy wood.
All right. And then put in a decent sized dehumidifier. That's what the guy recommended. If you're going to do anything with the building at all, I mean, I don't.
Otherwise you're going to tear it down, throw it away.
Well, I mean, even, even if we, uh, you know, we, we've got to be somewhere anyway for a little while. And even if we don't stay here, uh, what are you going to do with the building? It's not occupiable if it's full of mold.
Right. I agree.
Okay, so, uh, this person recommended that we get a cost estimate to do that. Excavation company, take a look and, uh, tell us what it means. Are you recommending that we go forward with that and see what it costs to do what you just said, basically dig around the?
That's what I'm recommending. I mean, to get some, give us an estimate. You get, yeah, I make a motion that we get, well, probably some, uh, carpenters would probably bid on that part of it. They're just going to.
Pour foundation?
Well, they'll pour that foundation up above ground level at least. And then either block it or pour right up next to the building. I don't know how they want to do it. Give us, give us an estimate.
And how they do it? Give us an estimate and tell us how they're going to do it.
Yeah.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Let's find out what it means. Okay. Town administrator progress, sort of gave some of that.
I gave some of that when we talked earlier, but I wanted you to know that, um, Abby has suggested that I call the town of Vernon, Vermont, because they just hired a administrator, a town administrator in June of two thousand and sixteen. Um, and they just went through this whole same process and wondered if they could give us some tips and, and how they did it and everything. And they use Vermont leagues of cities and towns like we are doing and they placed the ad form. They received forty-six applications. I was really surprised at that. I was surprised they got that many. Um, Vermont leagues of cities and towns helped narrow them down and select the ones to be interviewed. And what the town did was they formed a hiring committee of two members of the select board and three members from their town community. And they became the, the interview committee who interviewed these candidates and then made a recommendation to the select board on who they wanted and then the select board decided from there. Um, they chose a number of, they didn't want to have it be unfair by seeing names. So when they gave the committee members the applications, they blocked the name off and numbered them so that they would pick the most qualified or they felt they would pick the most qualified. And they thought that had made it a little easier. Um, they hired a young woman named Michelle, who they're very pleased with. She lived in Bratterboro and came from a nonprofit where she did grant writing. And they felt the grant writing was a big asset to them. She works forty hours a week. She gets paid fifty thousand dollars a year plus benefits. Um, the town clerk's name is Tim Arsenal. And Tim said they highly recommended not hiring anyone from within the town. And he could not stress enough about keeping confidential names of people who do apply for many reasons. One being we could be sued. Two, if word got out that they had applied and their employers found out, they could be fired. And there was many reasons and he said he couldn't stress enough how confidential you need to be with the hiring. He said Michelle was currently in the process of writing their town report for him. And she had just walked in, so we put her on the phone to talk to me for a couple of minutes. And she said she certainly has plenty to keep her busy. And the most important is consuming part of her job was the grant writing, human resources. They don't have a, a new personnel policy either and they're working on a new personnel policy. They have sixteen employees, not counting elected officials. They also have a library in their building and they have a rec department in their building. And they were very accommodating and told us to feel free to call again with other questions and they'd be happy to talk to us again.
Others comments from anybody?
How big is that town, too, you know?
Twenty-two hundred, twenty-two oh six.
Okay, that's all I used, I didn't know how big town was.
Yeah. Yeah. She said, I know where Pownell is. I used to take my mother over to Bingo at the racetrack.
Is everybody refers to, oh, yeah, I remember where that was, down with the racetrack.
Yeah. I've heard that so many times in the past week. I know where that is. There was a racetrack there.
Well, one of the things I sort of liked was the fact that, uh, you got community involvement in the choice to give you input. But it is ultimately, but ultimately it's the select board that decides.
Cause then you got, well, you got more, a bigger input.
Yep, yes. You don't have to worry about the select board having three votes lined up and who they're picking or any of the rest of it.
I agree.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, so I do have a question. When we go to do the ad, Vermont leagues of cities and towns will get the applications. They will come, they should come to the chairman of the board. And if we're not going to see names, if we decide not to do names, somebody will have to block off the names and number them before they go on to a committee or whatever. So are you agreeable to me having the applications come to the chairman?
I don't have any problem with that. I think the thing to do though is, is really for me to put them in a folder and elect this committee and let them open up the applications and do what they will.
That's true. I think the committee.
I like that idea. I think it's a good idea.
That way we don't even know from the get-go.
Yeah.
So should we ask people that want to be on the committee to put in an application or call us?
Anybody out there wishes to be on the committee for that, uh, please contact Linda and give us your name and phone number so we can call you. Uh, we'll make, uh, some choices.
So should I make a motion that we form a committee of five?
That's your call.
All right, I'll make a motion that we do similar to what town of Vernon did. We'll appoint three people plus two select board members. Is that enough, guys?
Is five enough or seven?
I would like to see three select board members.
But then they can make a choice though. That's the problem when you put three on the committee. It, you want it so if they.
Are they making the choice or they're making a recommendation?
No, they're making a recommendation.
They're making a recommendation, but when you get to the board, the three votes are already there.
Yeah.
Okay.
This board, this board, we will decide who we hire.
That's why I think the most that should be there is two, four.
Okay, okay, I got you.
All right.
But, but I have no trouble with making it.
And then that committee can set up the interviews. I, I can help as the clerk as far as checking references and BLTC can do that too.
Well, my concern is, is, is it's five enough or should it be seven? I know some committees can get too large, but if we got two, well, I guess two and three is fine. It's just, well, let's see who, let's see who gets.
Seven people interviewing one person, I think is a lot.
You need, you need, you're probably better off to stay with five because then you'll get five to show up.
Yeah.
Okay.
The committee gets too big and there's always, wow, I don't have to go. They got six other ones.
Right. Yeah, I'd like to see somebody be on the committee.
It works like the rest of our committees. I agree with you.
That wants to be on the committee.
And that's just a thought.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we form a committee with two select board members and three people from the town to be a search committee for our new town administrator.
Okay. Get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please get your name in and then we can make some choices.
All right, and I'll let Abby know that we're going with that.
Do we want to set a deadline for the, for when people?
That's the other thing.
You'll front for people's names to be, to people to apply or?
Well, we're going to, I'm, I'm, I'm scheduled to talk to Abby tomorrow and they will, um, she said we should be able to get everything done in the next couple of weeks. And hopefully the Vermont League Newsletter here, we can have the ad in the first of March. And we will put, applications will be taken until the position is filled. So if we get.
Okay, then let's, let's say that we're, who knows who'll be sitting here. Let's, let's have it march, after the March election, they appoint a few people.
Right. So have people.
You just never know who's going to be here.
Have people come in after the March election. We'll see who's left on the board and go from there.
Good idea.
Any other questions?
And remember, if you're not elected, you're the public.
You can still serve on the committee.
You're the public. When I look at you, Ronnie.
Or me or Bruce.
That's not my bit.
That's not your what?
That's not my thing.
Serving in committees?
No, I'm picking somebody for a job. I just don't like it. I've done it.
Okay. Okay, uh, with that done, well, everybody said aye, right? Did I get an aye today?
Did you get an aye?
Okay, no nays, no obsessions. Okay, so motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Thanks, folks.
How are the guys doing?